I'd like to call to order the common council meeting for August 23rd, 2022 at 6:00. Is it 18:00 PM? Sorry. 19. Attendance roll call.
Alder Person's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
Capousta's absent. Schrader.
Here.
Kabaki.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a Corin present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone from the comment to come forward and speak about any agenda item. Sure.
Thank you.
Just state your name and address.
Lawrence Glenn Raithley, W191 S6456, Haylen Dale Drive. Just one second. Also speaking on behalf of Greg Wakolski, he asked, he was on vacation. He asked me for the, to speak with you guys. His address is S64W18807 School Drive. This is in regards to the parking regulations or the parking, no parking signs on School Drive. And after the decision was made a few meetings ago, I then let all my neighbors know what the outcome was. And when Greg found out, he wasn't real happy with the no parking signs down the Gold. And when I did go originally for petitions, for signatures from everybody, that I did kind of make that clear that I only wanted to go down to Preston. So that was the idea that was, what was going to possibly happen. After the decision was made, I then proceeded to let Greg and all the neighbors know. Greg wasn't real happy with that. And I believe he talked to appropriate people and he also called me. We had a good length of discussion. I talked to Eileen as well. And I did explain to him exactly the point of if we, if he did want to have gatherings, like parties or graduations and what have you, that he could get a waiver from the police department. But he was aware, he's okay with that, but the biggest concern that he had was the signage. He didn't like, he didn't, he didn't want the signs, which I totally understood too. So he would love, love to have been here, but he was on vacation this week. And so he did call to ask me to speak on his behalf. So I basically explained to you that he would also, would like if we, he's definitely in support of everything that we have thus far. But he would like to be able to just pull back the signs back to Preston and just stop at Preston and just, and see how it goes from there. So having that said, that's kind of what he was requesting. I'm just basically conveying that to you guys. Same thing. I originally did want that as well, but now with Greg's input and his support on that, I just ask for your reconsideration on that and go from there.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. We'll move on to communications from the mayor's office. Happy birthday, Alderman Wolf.
Thank you.
It's also Eileen's birthday this week, I think, and Alderman Capousta's.
The same day?
No, this week.
Oh.
I'll bring it Monday if you guys want to come. Mine's a Monday, so next week. Just a reminder to the public, the Community Dandelion Days Festival is going on this weekend. The parade is also on Sunday. I encourage everyone to get out. It's a good way to see your neighbors and support your community with all the fest, all the festivals made up of a number of the service organizations in town. A lot of hard work, a lot of volunteerism goes into it. It's a lot of fun, a good family event. So that's going on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday as well. The parade route, if you are going to be watching the parade, the parade route has changed. So make sure you're aware of that. It goes from its original starting point on Janesville Road and Lannan. Yeah, and goes up to Pioneer, then Pioneer down to the festival grounds. So be aware of that. So if you're lining up like people have done for years on Racine Avenue, you're not going to be seeing a parade. And that concludes my communications from the mayor's office. Consent agenda.
Resolution 057, 2022 proceedings by the Common Council of the City of Mesquite to discontinue and vacate a road right-of-way in the City of Mesquite, Wisconsin, Madison Court. Resolution 064, 2022, approval of a one-lot certified survey map for Ken Servie. Resolution 065, 2022, approval of a flat, a final plat for the Mallard Reserve subdivision. Resolution 066, 2022, approval of a bond reduction for D C N LLC. Resolution 067, 2022, approval of a dedication of public improvements for the Dunoon Country Estates North Division, D C N LLC. Resolution 068, 2022, approval letter of credit reduction for Rin Investments LLC. Resolution 069, 2022, approval of a letter of credit reduction for the Glen at Mesquite Lakes LLC. Resolution 070, 2022, approval of a dedication of public improvements for Glen at Mesquite Lakes. Resolution 071, 2022, approval of reimbursement for water main and sanitary sewer upsizing for Glen at Mesquite Lakes LLC. Approval of change of agent to Nicole Luac for the Class A retail combo liquor license held by Ultra Mart Foods LLC. DBA pick and save number 381 located at South 74 West 170 05 Janesville Road. And approval for outside dance permit to Tailspin LLC, DBA Tailspin Bar and Grill located at South 64 West 182 95 Martin Drive for the following dates. Thursdays, September 1st, 2022 to October 27th, 2022. From 6:30 to 9:30 PM and Saturdays, October 1st, 2022 to October 29th, 2022, from 4 to 10 PM.
Motion to approve grows.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Question.
Yes.
Regarding the change in the subdivision for Mallard Reserve, how do we speak with you?
There is an opportunity for you to speak when we had public comment? We can talk after the meeting, but, and if you bring, something that's been approved, if you bring enough case, and I hate to do this, you can always have it brought back for reconsideration. But yeah. I lost one of the aldermen who want to make a motion to bring that back and allow the floor.
Wait, has it added and approved?
Yes, it was just, it was just added in here and consent.
Oh, okay.
No, we didn't.
We didn't. So, so they can pull, that's what I just said. One of the aldermen can pull that.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to pull it and let her talk.
I'll second.
So which one?
Which one are you pulling?
Resolution 065, 2022. Okay. And then are we also agreeing to, is there any objection to allowing her to have the floor?
No.
No.
All right. Amy, you can come forward. Yeah, if you could give us that. You can give it to us after. That's fine. Just say your name and address.
I'm Ellie Warnicki. I live in Astor Hill subdivision. The, on the common council agenda came up the change in the plans for the entrance and exit to the new subdivision. And that's what I brought to Randy, my neighbor, because he lives on the corner of Preagle and Boxhorn. And this will affect him more than it will affect me.
Please speak towards the microphone just so it's picked up for our recording purposes. There's a microphone right in front of you when you're talking.
Sure. My name is Randy Nowska. Do you want my address too?
Yes.
W129 S8726, Boxhorn Reserve Drive, Mesquite 53150. So I think our concern was the, everything was approved with two entrances from Durham on, into the subdivision. And right now the change is made to eliminate one of those. So that would increase the traffic going through, through Preagle. And I know it was originally approved with two entrances and wanted to know, I guess, why this is being changed. Is it, is it a safety issue? Is it a monetary issue? So we would prefer there, if there are two, two exits.
That the Durham Road exit remain, which you've eliminated and made a cul-de-sac where the planner wants, the planning of the builders want to put a cul-de-sac there instead of the originally planned exit. And because previously there were three, actually three, because there's a, the exit onto Durham Drive, which most traffic from the subdivision would probably use because that's the main portion of it. Then there was a side road that went to Preagle Drive, that's the front. And then there's one at the back of the subdivision that exits off to Preagle. And when this was first planned in, I think it was April of 2021, I did call the city planning and just ask that they protect Preagle Road with all the children, people riding their bikes, people walking. The lady who has the horses, lots of people use Preagle to access to the park as well as just for pleasure in that area. You'll see people go out and walk and to the far end of Preagle and then come back. So that was the concern. When you make it the cul-de-sac, it forces all the traffic from the subdivision to Preagle Road. And inevitably it will increase all traffic in Astor Hills with people moving through our neighborhood as well. So we were asking that you reconsider this or have a discussion about it so that our HOA and Randy in particular, because that affects the whole side of his house, that we can have a conversation with you regarding it. We'd like to really know why the changes were made.
So specific, Scott, do you want to address any of that? And then, and then I'll also piggyback on.
Well, this, this also went through planning authority, right?
That's, I'm going to piggyback on that.
Okay.
This body is not really the one to me, be making suggestions on changing layouts. That would be plan commission.
So again, when we looked at it, there was, correct, the first preliminary plat that came through, there was two access points off of Preagle and one after, off of Durham. As we further went through this thing, a couple of things happened. As we started getting into the design along Durham, and you'll see it start seeing curves and you'll start seeing sightlines and horizontal and vertical. It became harder and harder and began to realize that was going to become more of a dangerous intersection than a lot of people plan. If anyone's driven it and now you're going to have people coming out. Two, you're running into another issue of drainage. Drainage was another issue and bypass lanes had to be created. So a solution came up and the request was, that went through plan commission. I think it had to go through them again to eliminate that one access point and just have the two access points off of Preagle. Again, most subdivisions, we like two access points in a minimum. It, it worked out where they went back to plan commission and they had the two access points off Preagle. One that lines up with the Astor Hills one and one that is further down. Again, it's 45, I believe 44, 45 lots. But at that time, that's why it was eliminated. And then it went back to plan commission. Were you on there, Kabaki? Do you remember briefly?
I recall the discussion, yes. Yeah.
So from our standpoint, it was just when we started getting to the engineering design and then it went back to plan commission with that suggestion.
So preliminary plots are really just that. They're very preliminary. It's kind of like the, a couple of steps up from a napkin, a napkin, bar napkin drawing. Once they get into the engineering and they really, you know, they, they don't spend a lot of money until they get that approved because the engineering cost is so expensive. So you do a preliminary plot and then you get into the cost of the engineering, which will do soil samples and drainage and safety and all that other stuff. And then you come up with a final plot and here's where we're at.
I think the main concern was the safety of it in putting.
On the Durham was the biggest.
On the Durham side because of the, the topography there.
Yeah, there, there's a hill and a curve there. It's a, it's a very, it's kind of a little scary to pull out there.
There's also a speeding problem there, all of this.
I am sure there is. Probably the number one complaint that we get probably in the city is, I, I get is speeding. But sightlines and the curves, it, it did would become a very kind of dangerous situation.
Well, I'll ask why, when it was originally planned for the subdivision, I got a notice in the mail regarding the subdivision happening. How come there was, how come there was never any further communication with any of us who lived?
So the notification you got was for the rezoning of the property and that we do, that's done by our ordinance. We're required to. And it's also just a good idea to let people know that the property, you know, that's fairly close to their property is going to be changing the type of use. In this case, it went from agriculture to residential. So if this, if they were to make a change to the zoning, you would be notified. But that also, that notification put you unnoticed to, okay, this is changing next door to you. Now it's your responsibility to follow this through, which you obviously did because you're here today at that point. So.
Now, now the public hearings, how does that work? You might want to explain that.
So was, she did get that notification.
But there's no feedback, right? The public, I mean, I mean, public speaking, I'm sorry.
The public speaking there is, but here we gave her the privilege of the floor.
Right, right.
That's why we're allowed to talk back and forth with you. So the public hearing that was for the rezoning, that's more of a one-way communication anyway. So that would have been, you come up and you say you're for or against the rezoning and we can't really feed, give you feedback in a public hearing. What you're doing right now is a different, that's why I'd ask council to give you permission to speak because then we can go back and forth and it's talking about something on the agenda that's a state statute with open meetings. So probably doesn't really help you in explaining that part of it. But the notification you got for the rezoning is your notification that you get. And typically if you have concerns with it, you would follow that through. For your own, we do have a feature on our website that you can sign up for notifications. That you automatically get notifications on like all your plan, all plan commission meetings and they'll automatically send you the agenda. All common council, that's on our website as well. And it's right on the front page where you can click and sign up on those as well.
Yes, that's how I found that it was going to be on the agenda today. But previously I was unaware that there were any changes or anything else happening. It will.
And it previously had gone through plan commission for that as well.
And so where do we go from here?
Well, we're dealing, it's up to the council. I don't get a vote on this, but I mean, they're going to be dealing with science at this point that are consulting engineers has done their job and they're making the recommendations on this for that reason. You have to have two exits on the, for the sub, for the subdivision regardless for fire and rescue. And the recommendation was not to have one of those onto Durham for safety reasons.
Hey Scott, what is, I'm going to, to the, this side of that, like you've got, is that north?
Which way are you looking?
So you got the cul-de-sac where the entrance used to be. If you go further away from the other entrance, is that developed land? What is next?
Heading west. So Durham goes north and south.
Yes, it looks like.
You go, you go to the west.
That's where the ponds are.
That's when you got ponds and then you got a large amount of wetlands there.
Okay.
And then there's, I believe some type of, I think utility pools or ATC lines that are around that area as well. And then you got the May property. Again, what you have further west on Preagle Road is you have potential where May property could be developed. I don't know. It seems like there's very little land to develop there based off of wetlands. There's also a horse farm that she has indicated. That horse farm is directly west of Astor Hill, Sand Hill Park, and then the horse farm. Now, the horse farm has about 20-some acres, I believe, and that potentially could be developed. We, we just don't know. Again, but besides that, once you get past the horse farm, it's all DNR, I believe, owned land.
It's all DNR trust land.
You mentioned ATC, so you talk infrastructure. The cost of moving infrastructure is impossible to pay for.
Well, that's all, it's all wetlands too. There is a large chunk of wetlands to the west.
That's all unbuildable anyway.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's a, the two chunks of land to the west that could be developed is a May property and the horse farm. And that's it.
I mean, I was just looking to see if there, obviously you've got where it was. Could it have gone further to the west, the entrance? And sort of eliminated some of the concern?
Well, you got the one, you want to line up the one entrance way with the other entrance way. That's the first entrance. There's two entrances on Preagle. Okay?
No, I'm saying the, the entrance on Durham, right?
Durham.
There is not, there is no entrance.
Yeah, I'm saying the old one.
The old one?
The old one. If it had moved.
It's on a turn, yeah.
Further to the northwest, would that have alleviated some of the, I mean, I.
I, I don't know because we didn't really study it. You know, it was more of like, if they only needed two entrances, why put a third? And no offense, if I'm a developer.
Because you had a house right there.
You start taking lots away. I'm, I'm trying to both play both sides of this. If you, if, if, again, if you start moving and access points also too, is how close is that access point? Probably pretty close to Big Mesquite Estates. Was that right across from Big Mesquite Estates?
Yes, yeah.
The subdivision is, but the entrance isn't. The entrance is farther down for.
No, on Durham, if he's talking about on Durham.
I think the original one was set right across from Big Mesquite Estates. Or was it? Okay. I, I can't remember though.
No.
It's been a long time since we had that original plan.
Yeah, no.
Scott, do you recall when that meeting was? Because what I'm going to suggest is that maybe you listen to the minutes because this was discussed at the plan commission meeting. I'm not sure when the date of that was.
I really don't know. I'll, I'll be honest with you.
Well, it should be in the resolution.
Yeah, that'd be, I'd say at least six months ago or more.
Yeah.
It was quite some time ago.
Yeah.
PC 051.
And Scott, it's not a comment for things to move when you do this.
From plan commission or from planning, plan has, there's no engineering involved yet. So.
Yeah. So that was just in August?
No, it was well before that.
Well, it was approved, it was approved at that August meeting that you chaired, but I don't think that's when, discussions were at a previous plan.
Right.
Yeah.
And like I said, it still had to go back to plan. Like this was a significant enough change to go back to plan.
Plan goes over it, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that May 4th, 2021? Is it? That was the preliminary plat. Revised plat, it was December of 21. Yeah. So you may want to check the, the, the meeting notes from May 4th, 2021 and December 7th, 2021.
Kind of makes sense. It feels like May 4th would be the first one, December 20, 2021 would have been coming back to plan commission.
Yeah, because there, there was discussion about it and there was.
It, it was a big enough change to, to come back to you guys. So that's how we do checks and balances. So.
Anyone want to entertain anything else?
Just say it's a major change because it puts all the cars coming, leaving the subdivision. Most families will have two cars, making multiple trips every day. It puts it all onto Preagle, which is just a tiny little road with the intersection with Durham. And that may, you know, cause jam-ups there and other problems. And on the site where the houses will be, they've dumped millions of pounds of dirt and hundreds of trucks have gone every week in and out, moving dirt with the Great Water Project and whatever else. So there's been tons of land moving over there and stuff happening. So we as homeowners wouldn't necessarily know what changes were being made. If we don't get anything from the city or from the builder. It's just unfortunate that all the traffic will be basically coming out of the corner of Astor Hills and Preagle.
And I think.
It's a lot of cars.
The initial plan was to do, was to have one of them on Durham. It's just not feasible from a safety standpoint.
There's that other past, as you're going towards Mesquite on Durham, past the farmhouse with the barn. There's the whole other subdivision on the right. I don't know the name of it. They have an exit onto Durham. As well as there's four or five or six other houses along there that have exits onto Durham.
So the whole, individual home, you can't stop them from doing it. So, so if you have an individual plot, they're allowed an access. The subdivision for Big Mesquite Estates and Holt's Drive is much farther north. And that's, doesn't deal with the hills and the curves that this site would be dealing with. So if you're going up Durham, it kind of comes up that hill gently from Big Mesquite Estates and then comes down and curves. And that hill and the curve is what's causing a problem in this area for making it a safety hazard.
It's a lot of cars going.
I, I, I can't argue with you on that.
Maybe the city and the builders should have looked at and planned for more before.
Well, it may, the remedy on that will, may still be the remedy in the future. If that road has a high traffic count, would be improving that road to be able to handle it. It's not going to be a, the remedy wouldn't be to not have the entrance there. It would be to make sure the road can support it. So yes, I agree. It's a small road now, but it may facilitate the need for larger roads, unfortunately.
And again, you may want to just review the discussion that was had about the safety concerns in that original plat.
Is there anything the city can do about the ongoing? Because even getting out at Preagle now is difficult with speeding cars. Is this speeding cars?
I get, I get that. And I don't mean, I don't mean to cut you off, but we have to, by law, just stick to the plot right now. So the other stuff, I'd be happy to talk with you and address like speeding and stuff like that, but we can do that outside the meeting. But because of Wisconsin open meeting laws, we have to stick to the subject of the plot right here.
I appreciate you taking the time to hear us because it was unexpected and it honestly is a lot of cars coming out of Preagle. It's all the houses from that subdivision will use that, that, probably that first main exit and Preagle Road. So I appreciate your time. Thank you. I think we'll probably bring it up with you further with Eileen and we will look at all the planning things for it. And I appreciate your time. That's just.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we. We haven't done the consent vote yet either. Yeah, let's just add it. Yeah, we seconded it, but we. We pulled this from consent. So we'll just to, so consent without this item. Any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. That passes unanimously. Then resolution. Move my book around here one second.
Motion to approve Resolution 065, 2022.
All right, I need a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. That passes. Thank you. Moving on to new business, reconsideration of Resolution 061, 2022, establishing traffic regulations, no parking signs on School Drive.
That was me. How do I?
Move to approve.
Second.
A reconsideration, is that, was that right or was that, okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's just the vote for reconsidering. We have a first and a second. Do we just vote on that or do we have discussions on why we're reconsidering it? Okay, all right. So I'm asking to have it brought back on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Now it's on the floor for further discussion. Now you can talk about what you want.
Do we need to beat this or can we just make an amendment? Are we? I'd make an amendment to the original first version to pull back the no parking sign to the edge of Preston.
Second.
Yeah, my only question is, is it just the one gentleman that doesn't want that or is it everybody on the street? Are we going to, is it going to come back again? Do we know?
I don't believe it will come back again because I have some consensus from everybody at X Fox who, they agree, they agree that the issue wasn't that far to the east as much as it is towards that west end. So I, I don't believe, I strongly don't believe it will be an issue. Don't quote me, but I.
You can quote me. I'm fine. I, I talked to Greg and he, he said he's never had problems down there with the parking, but was in huge support of what they were trying to do. Saw it was an issue, was on board. He meant to be here for the meeting if he was here. This is his fault. When we first voted on this, this probably would have been addressed. So he apologized for that. And luckily we missed our last meeting and could reconsider. So that was the end of the road that isn't having issues and is fine with there not being the parking signs there. So.
So he may not have issues now, but he may after the signs go up is what we were trying to avoid.
Greg, I doubt Greg. Well, he is all the way down to Gold and School. I mean, that's a walk. I mean, if, yeah. There may, some of his neighbors may have issues with it, but I can't see where Greg is.
And he even brought up that when there's events, like they'll get parking, but he said, nobody's really complaining. The one or two times a year where there's like a Christmas concert at the school and parents are struggling to find parking. We're not going to stop that. There's going to be cars all over the place, but.
Just like someone having a party, same thing.
But no, he's actually, he hosts regularly and has a lot of people parking down there. And so he also invited us all over as part of this.
I don't like no parking. I don't like signs to start with, but so I would make this as least as you can and keep constituents happy at the same time. So. All right. Do we have, you and me, you made a motion. Does somebody second it?
I second.
All right. Further discussion? Motion, the.
Motion to amend.
Motion, the vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right. Now, any further discussion on the motion as amended? All those in favor of the further motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion as amended has been reconsidered, amended and passed. Review of committee reports. In front of you, you have the. Review of committee reports, in front of you, you have the finance committee meeting from June 28th, and the plan commission meetings from June 7th for your review. Voucher approval.
Motion to approve utility vouchers in the amount of $494,778.05.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, passes.
There are no tax vouchers. Motion to approve general fund vouchers, the amount of $501,968.86.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, that passes.
Motion to approve wire transfers for payroll transmittals in the amount of $396,941.71.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, that passes. City officials reports, we have none. Communications and miscellaneous business as authorized by law, any updates from any of the aldermatic liaisons? Hearing none.
No, I think, I think you already mentioned at the festival, you have a festival committee on there, the, of that festival going on this weekend, and.
And we're still looking for volunteers if anyone can help out.
And then you also mentioned that you have a birthday, so happy birthday upcoming on Monday, so.
Thanks. Any future agenda item requests?
Just one that I think is going to be on the agenda anyway, and that's the use of the American Rescue Funds, I think that's going to be on next week's call or, or next month's.